The number three on our agenda, discussion of field site visits. Just for the record, we did visit Antalya at four thirty, had a good site walk. Visited the upper fields behind the school. Took a look at the woodlands to the west. We have that letter. We measured the field. Okay, we have more copies.
Thank you.
Now, let's say, this is obviously dated February twenty first, two thousand eight. I'll just tell you, out of the four pages, if you see the, the volume of page information from the Recreation Commission where this was registered, the, the third page is not there. It was just a signature page from our engineer identifying that he was signing off on the first. There was no content. So, if, if anybody wants the signature page from Todd Parsons, I'd be glad to provide it, but I just, I didn't want to make our town clerk waste the ink and the toner. So, this has been considered before. It was considered as early as February two thousand eight when Earl McGinnis was first selectman and asked, you know, our consulting engineers at Lennar to take a look at, preliminary look at Antalya as well as another site for potential development with recreational sports field. And they presented ten initial findings. First and foremost is that, as we see on page one, the existing field is east-west. Apparently that is not ideal in the perfect world of sports fields because of the sun orientation. At some point, somebody's gonna be looking into the sun in the fourth quarter or the second half of the side of the game.
Why is it the opposing team? I don't speak around that.
No, I think, you know, it's, there obviously is a tree line there also.
I see what you're saying right now.
But, I mean, in a perfect world, a north-south orientation is ideal. Number two, earthwork, approximately two-thirds of the field is existing. The remaining third on the west side would require some cutting and filling to bring it to grade. And they estimate that the cut fill would be in the range from zero, where they feel it's level to a maximum of ten feet. They also note that the existing field is not graded perfectly or consistently, and the town would have to decide, you know, what we wanted to do. If we wanted to go in and do a full disturbing, you know, regrade of the whole field. Number three, approximately one-third of the new field, they call it new, I call it expansion, would be constructed in the area that's currently woodland, and obviously we would need to cut the trees, so they state the obvious. And in that, in the cutting trees, number four, of course, there's an obstacle course, a ropes course, that is no longer utilized. And I, I did check with Kate Rieger, who's now in the Capitol Subcommittee, that it's no longer used. A portion of an obstacle course is in the area proposed field, and that would need to be either relocated, they say relocated, or removed. Grow-in period, and I think this is important. Generally athletic fields require at least one full season for turf to mature before it can sustain play. This means that an entire new field or any portion therein that is disturbed would likely be out of commission for a year. So, thus the reason here we are entering the budget season that if we choose to make this or any other property a priority, we just know that the timeline is such that it's not gonna be an instantaneous solution to the problem. It takes time. Obviously, they say that the, the time period could be shortened using sod, but at a significant expense. And now, obviously, there's also artificial turfs, and you name it. I mean, if you wanted to, to pay the money, you could obviously increase the cost and shorten the timeframe. Construction access is number six. The logical construction access for construction equipment is from the driveways on the east side of the school, then across this field. If we use that, then obviously there's restoration of the field in the area that was disturbed. It is also likely that the driveway to the field was not intended to carry heavy equipment, so that may be damaged if that is in fact the case.
Could I just pass this one?
Sure.
Have a look at it.
Sure, we have a couple more copies, and anybody who wants, anybody that wants the information can get it.
Yeah, yeah. So, if anyone wants to follow what you're saying.
Okay. Soil types, which I think is pertinent. USD mapping shows that most of the area in the construction area proposed is gloucester. They list the soils Charlton, Hollis, Chatfield. But most importantly, there are no wetland soils shown on the soil maps in the vicinity of the area. Baseball, number eight, the proposed field will overlap in their schematic, which you see in the diagrams that they have, would overlap the baseball diamond. This could be avoided if the field is shifted to the west, but obviously, the more you go to the west, the more you're constructing and the more the cost goes up. Alternate layout, an alternate, this is number nine, an alternate layout or rotating the field to a northwest-southeast configuration is possible, but likely disturb more of the obstacle course and require more earthwork. So, I know that we measured to four hundred and twenty feet, which was kind of in the middle of the obstacle course, but I think at this point, if we're all acknowledging that the obstacle course is not used, I don't.
I agree, that, you know, it's pretty.
Were concerned, and it's fairly level.
It's really just a mild slope where we walked up and down.
And then the tenth item is full design. If the town decides to pursue this project, it will require full design based on accurate topographic survey. Once the survey is complete, LEI, which is Lennar, could further evaluate various alternate layouts. The survey will need to include the location of underground utilities, water supply, obstacle course equipment, other site features that may affect the design. LEI anticipates that the majority of the work will be undertaken by a site contractor, hence the full set of specifications and bid documents, which is not unlike what we did with the field house. We had them design the spec, and that really makes it easier, so you get apples to apples.
You need to, oh, yeah.
And then, if the town wishes to employ volunteer or town labor force, LEI recommends that those forces be used for segments of the project that can be easily separated from the majority work, such as relocation of the obstacle course or tree course. So, there are parts that you could take out to save them up. You know, we have, you know, town crew, the chipper, you know, there's not a lot of, the thing that I noticed there, not a lot of old growth forest, a lot of smaller trees in the six to seven to eight inch caliper range. It's almost like it was cleared and not too long ago, you know, especially right off the field.
Only a small section of the site that has any trees, you know.
Right, there, there were a couple of those trees. I, I don't want to downplay it, but you can see that they went so far as to review aerial maps with a little bit of soil information to show the geography in relation to the, the property design on the first map, and then they blow it up to show a little bit more with the topographical contours, you know, showing that it's about eight hundred and ten feet above sea level, and that it slopes down, obviously, to the school where you could see the roof. But, what did you guys think of the, the site walk?
Well, I think it's, I think we probably not be all in agreement that it makes more sense to pursue, we're gonna pursue any of those two choices at the Antalya. There's too many things going against the Old Steel Road property and everything going for the Antalya property. Sure, it's gonna take a little bit extra work, take a little bit of money, but if this is, you know, what we want to do for the kids in our town and provide them with another field, it just makes more sense to go with Antalya.
I, I thought that, like I outlined, that the property first and foremost, you own it.
Right.
So, instead of having a capital appropriation, going to the board of finance, then going to the town, which, don't forget, even if we chose to go that route on Old Steel Road or any other, which we're gonna discuss Old Steel Road separately, but don't forget, you're gonna go to the people. You're gonna go, you're gonna authorize, this group is gonna authorize me or a subcommittee of us to go negotiate. We'd have an executive session, decide our parameters, what we want to do. Then we would have to outline a contract that would presume that any contract approved would not only gain board of finance and, and eventually town approval, but it would also include our land use board, because any, we'd have to have a guarantee in the contract to say, look, if, if the land use board is not gonna approve it.
Contractor would need all the zoning approvals.
That, we'd have to have zoning approval and, and well, and there's two land use agencies, you know, that you have to. Now, we know that here that our engineers said that they don't foresee any wetlands issues, but still, you have to go and you have to make sure, you have to get the soil scientist. As I said, first and foremost, you own. Secondly, the infrastructure, the value of the infrastructure at the school, especially the parking, which is one of the complaints that we've heard from Niles Road, is not necessarily that the park up there can't handle it, but the parking is so small up there that they have to park on the street. And then we have also heard the, the secondary issue of, you know, it's a fall sport, it gets dark early. It's not like the spring or summer sport where it's light until eight or nine o'clock. You know, these folks get out of work at five o'clock, they get up there at five thirty, it's already done.
I think the school, the school, you know, the school, you know, I, you know, used that playing field with my children, you know, years ago when they were students at the school. And so, it would be an improvement, you know, maybe an opportunity to improve the access to the field with better steps or, you know, more better handicap access, as well as expanding to a partnering areas that the school would benefit from.
The synergy with the kids every day.
Plus, this is major football, so how old are these kids? They're probably in the school, right?
There's, yeah.
Yeah, they're in the school already, so.
There's three or four teams. I don't know what the oldest.
But they're probably, you know, fifth, fourth, fifth and sixth graders.
So, that's about.
Eighth, eighth, eighth grade.
Do they go to eighth?
Once you get to high school, you can't play.
Thank you.
But some of the students, some of the football players might be ending their school day and be able to practice and be at the school already. That's my point. I don't know if I.
It starts later.
Yeah, it starts later, oh, okay.
So, they go home and come back. But even that, that's only one portion of the school year.
Right.
Yeah, you're talking just about that fall. You also have the spring. You, you have a baseball field up there. We don't have, one of the things that was acknowledged in one of the public meetings is that we don't have a softball field for our girls.
Congratulations.
Okay. We do have challenges with, we have a lot of participation in travel soccer and recreation soccer, so, you know, the fact that, you know, football mirrors soccer, we want to make sure that if we chose to go in this direction, that we provided a suitable size that we could do both. So, I think, I think there's a lot of pros there, and I think geographically, location, we've heard, we've heard some comments from people in the Niles Road neighborhood that that street is in a rural location and, you know, you're bringing traffic into that area. I, I don't necessarily agree with all of the concerns about location, because we already have Brody Park, the northern section. It is a destination location for people in town to go to the beach, to go to everything that is Brody. But you can't argue with being at the intersection of Route two nineteen and Route two oh two off a state highway. It is, it is not necessarily the geographic center of the town, but it's close, it's to the south of the center. You put the geographic center kind of by my dad's house, Town Hill, kind of two nineteen, right there in the middle, you're just, you're a mile or two south.
I don't think there'd be any complaints about the lighting that the football field would have either, so.
Right.
In the other locations, you.
You already have lights up there in the parking lot tonight.
Yeah, but if you were to light up the football field, if they came, if you built a football field with lighting, you don't have any neighbors at the Antalya school that would be opposed to the lighting, because no one lives around there.
Well, there, there's a couple.
Few people, but not, not within the seventy acres.
But still, we're talking about, should we choose to make this a priority for the town, then we would, we'd have to define our course of action, which would mean we have land use agencies, again, whose we're altering property. We need to go to the land use boards, work with our commissions, you know, get, get our, all of our agencies in town, board of finance, recreation, inland weapons, even though we still have to sign off, planning zone and our group, to say, how are we gonna, how are we gonna get together to solve this problem? And, and this is before, this is this property or any other that we choose to modify. So, I think there's a lot of, a lot of pros to Antalya. I'm not really sure that I know the cons yet. And I know that I've had brief discussions with the superintendent, I know that they've visited this issue before. I know that the board has changed somewhat, you know, so obviously, we would have to work with the board of it also to say, look, you know, we see an opportunity, we see some level of.
Improvement for that.
Improvement for, for the contention over the, of the location. But don't forget, this does not necessarily solve all your problems, because you have recreational soccer that practices there four nights a week, that would then be removed and have to go somewhere else. And with Brody Park, South Brody Park, New Hartford Elementary, remaining viable locations.
Once you, once, you know, the proposal you have two thousand eight, though, I mean, once you maybe got, you know, some topographical survey of the land, there might be a possibility to build more than one field. I mean, if there, I mean, as we went down, because my perception of the two thousand eight document says that the, the ropes course stays, there's no field work there. So, I mean, there, there might even be a potential for more than one field. That's my point. I mean, if you're gonna, if you're in there with all this construction and all this, there might be an opportunity for that.
Well, at four hundred and twenty feet, which is what we measured, I mean, three hundred just for the playing surface, another sixty for the end zones.
Right.
Right, so you're three sixty. You gotta have some perimeter area, you know, to go around.
No, no, I.
People have to be able to traverse around the edges of the fields.
But, but, but it's seventy acres.
Oh, I know, but it shows the schematic of the field. And the only thing I would.
This is going up the hill here.
And you may not be able to get to.
Beyond that ropes course, the elevation changes.
And.
And when you start talking about elevation changes, you start talking about price changes. So.
No, but I just look at that, you know, that parking lot and the side entrance, you know, of Antalya, of Antalya School, which is small and that, that topography, you know, there where it jets up ten or twenty feet, you know. I'm just saying that, you know, the, however it lays out, it, you know, I guess what, I guess what my perception of what I saw on the walk is, even if you weren't gonna build a new, you know, proposing a, a football field, the area needs improvement, the existing area needs improvement. It seems a little bit tethered and run down to me, you know. And that's just my perception of, you know, having not been there in fifteen years, it doesn't look like a lot changed, you know, as far as.
Are you talking about the grounds?
Yeah, the ground, yeah, yeah.
Well, then you have, I know that the school does, they, they've had some plans for the future to take care, to redo all the pavement or the con, the, the caddem or whatever you call it.
Well, I think when you look at, are you talking about the field or the infrastructure?
I'm saying both.
With regard to the, overall, the infrastructure, two years ago, there was a, a move afoot to discuss putting money into Antalya School. And now, we, don't forget, recent history, we passed a bond for New Hartford Elementary, we passed a bond for Bakersville, and the guidance that the prior board, Tom, Cleveart, Bruce and myself said, we would consider that, the selectmen would consider that option, at which point the bond expired for the payment of Bakersville School, which is a ten-year note, which is, which will expire September two thousand fourteen.
So, it'd be an option.
You're gonna make, in this budget, you're gonna make your second to last payment. And then, you know, they, they're looking at, and it was a thoroughly vetted, talk about redoing the roof, talk about doing windows and door projects, Alicia on the board of finance, we discussed this up and down, and, and there was also furnaces that were inside. We paid furnaces for the ca, by cash and, and upgraded the heating system already, because we could afford it, it was.
I remember that.
You know, a hundred thousand dollars, and we got them more efficient boilers and, and got the old boilers out of there. But when you start talking about windows and doors on a forty thousand square foot building, the numbers start getting higher, and we gotta front it before we get reimbursement from the state. And the roof is a big enchilada, but what we said, and I think the community kind of heard, was, if you have a hundred or a hundred and twenty-five thousand debt service payment in your budget built in right now to take care of Bakersville, you could start studying and get the proposal together, and you can pitch that idea, so that when that last payment expires, you can do some work on Antalya and take care of that infrastructure that we all own, but you do it at no tax increase to the tax.
I think you're saying, I think you're saying, you know, and that's since you're saying the same thing that I am, that, you know, there's an opportunity to solicit funds for more than one agency because the school's already there. Maybe we could get funds, like you say, or the Fed funds or federal funds that might improve some of the infrastructure that are adjacent to the proposed field, that would enhance the proposed, proposed field in the end.
Well, and the thing that we're talking about, this strikes me, is that we don't have very many people coming toward me. There's people here now whose we're dealing with a sensitive issue of, there's been people at other meetings talking about the use of South Brody Park. We don't generally get a whole lot of people coming here, so we sense a concern, our job is to try to find a solution to problems. That, that infrastructure upgrade for Antalya has been out there and been talked about, but the question that I think we need to start discussing is the timeline, you know, because if we choose to say, yeah, we support doing something, but we don't put any money behind it, then it's just lip service. You know, everyone says, yeah, you talk about it, you talk about it, you talk about it, but you didn't do anything about it. Do, do we want to strike a middle ground where we would go at this proposal, Antalya or any other, to say, yeah, we, we know we're gonna work on the school eventually, but we're not happy with, you know, the size of the organization and what it does. I mean, we could put money into the parking in South Brody Park, but I think that's just gonna up the debate, you know, what, when you could take that money for parking in South Brody and put it into field expansion, put it in a less contentious location where the school kids could use it, and you already got parking, and you don't have to acquire them. So, there's a lot to talk about, but we're gonna talk about capital. But let's talk about Old Steel Road.
Did, did, did you want to ask anybody if they?
Anybody has any input about?
Let's, let's talk about whole, and then if the, it's up pay with the earth, we could take input. The, the Old Steel Road property, we measured at, why don't you reread the things? We did have some information put forward to us by Dan Eddy from the Rec Commission with some.
Okay, so, the first measurement that you took was from.
Yeah, the first one, this person.
This one? Which measurement do you want first, Dan? The one you did?
Oh, the first one was by the Brody Park.
Right, over to where, where the, where the foliage had identified was.
I just, I'm gonna write on mine. Don't write on yours, 'cause.
Okay.
All right? So, the.
The first measure was where you were reparked, over to where the foliage told you was the.
The corner.
The corner of the property. That was three hundred and twenty feet.
Okay.
And then when you went down to the, from the corner down to the other end, it was six twenty total, where it starts to.
Really nice.
Yeah. It was, yeah, three hundred to the middle of three twenty.
Okay.
Okay.
So, in a perfect world, if that was a pure rectangle, it'd be four and a half acres, which we know that it's not.
And you want the different widths?
So, just so we're clear, if the assessor's office is saying that it's ten acres, we know that fifty-five or sixty percent of the property is above the right-of-way that accesses Arbucci's house. Is that a fair, because we know that it's certainly not. I mean, I could scale it. The, the northernmost.
The width?
The northernmost width.
Hundred and thirty-five feet.
Was a hundred and thirty-five feet, and that's before we got all the way into the corner. I mean, obviously, it, it dives into nothing up and.
And then two fifty-five to the middle.
Okay.
By that, from the trees.
Two fifty-five. My take on it is this, first and foremost, we don't own the property. So, would it, once again, like we outlined, the procedure to acquire is that you have a capital outlay before you even hit the go button. You don't own it. Okay? So, there's money put out of hand in a negotiation, a contract, that would assume municipal approval at all levels, including land use boards, and ultimately referendum or town meeting to acquire property. I think you have challenges with access. I think that we will eventually, as a group, work through the Stedman Road collapse issues, but you have sightline issues coming out to two oh two. You would have major infrastructure required on a dead-end street on Old Steel Road that we all saw the condition, right? I think then you have land use requirements for setbacks and parking that if we took that property, and the diagram of the picture that you folks got, and you can share this with Jack.
I've seen it.
If you see where the three hundred foot mark is, right before that second set of, I believe it's sumac, this first field would not be built on this diagram. If you had to build a, a parking area of similar size to what we have at Brown's Corner, and we know what happens on, on days, I, I have many pictures of how they park on the islands, they park on the, the setbacks in the front, they park down by the baseball, they park in where the sand and gravel is. You know, we have a hundred and fifty or a hundred and sixty parking spaces, gravel, the thing about gravel parking lots is, there's no lines. So, you think you get a hundred and fifty, but you get one SUV or minivan that, that parks a little bit off, and the next thing you know, they take two. So, and then you have, you have access requirements for the neighbors, you know, where the, we saw that there's rights of way through the property, one to go to the butter and one to go up to Arbucci's house that you can't block. And I think if you look at this one diagram, it shows some of the parking area up on the side of that hill.
Yeah.
Thirty, forty feet above, I think, it just, I, I don't think it can work. I think that the challenge is, and I think we discussed this, is that I think the challenges for this would be too much to overcome.
I totally agree with you, plus, you know, not to mention the, the neighbors that already live there, you know, that's more of a, it's not a, it's not a nuts and bolts financial aspect, but it, it has a real effect on the people that are already living there, and I would not want to put those people through something like that that they don't want. There's no reason to put something there to upset the residents when we have another old town.
I think the lighting, you know, I, I agree with Alicia then. You know, you do have neighbors there that may not, that may not want it, and that would be, you would have to probably do a zone change, wouldn't you? No. We're in residential zone now?
There, there has been zone changes to the zoning regulations, and we have one of our commissioners here, but I'm not gonna ask him to comment.
Yeah.
There is, there is a new provision for something called a utility zone for the town for all properties that are municipally owned to allow them to be used the fashion that they're developed. Basically goes to them. I'm not an expert in that at all, but I think that whenever you're talking about it, if we had to do a zone change or whatever you're talking about, you're talking about, again, municipal approvals is a contingency of the contract, which means that our actions in a negotiation are contingent upon the actions of others. You know, there's no guarantee. You know, this is, this is above and beyond, you know, the neighborhood input, the community input, you know. We, we've heard a comment at some meetings, you know, where people come to, to discuss the trees and, and eventually the conversation turned to football at South Brody Park, and they talk about the location of Niles Road and the width of that road, where, I mean, I, I've driven every road in New Hartford. Niles Road is a fairly standard twenty to twenty-one, twenty-two foot road.
I don't disagree.
It's certainly twice the size of Old Steel Road.
I'll disagree that, 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 many of the concerns that the public has about the use of Brody Park South as, as a proposed football field are similarly concerned, if not identically concerned, that some of the neighbors that are here from Old Steel Road would have. So, that being said, you know, if there's an opportunity to, to hear from the neighbors tonight, I would like to, and from those, and for, for, for Dan Eddy who did quite a bit of due diligence in putting the information together and contacting the property owner as well as the other members of the Recreation Commission, maybe, you know, I don't have any other questions. I think maybe these folks would like to have. maybe, you know, I don't have any other questions. I think maybe these folks would like to have, you know, some input as to what their thoughts about, on the two locations.
You want to take some comment?
That's fine.
That's fine, I'm not, no objection.
Yeah, yeah.
Does any of the public want to comment on either of the two site visits or anything that they've heard?
Anybody that went to the first site visit that wants to comment at all? Anthony?
The Rec, I really applaud the efforts that the Board of Selectmen is, is putting forth in this endeavor. I think that Recreation Commission was approached by Youth Sports for new field space. I think that was the proper approach. Recreation Commission would then come up with options that it would present to the Board of Selectmen, and it seems the Board of Selectmen may want to preclude that, and that's fine with the Rec Commission, because that means we have to do less. The Rec Commission thought that the, the site that the Youth Sports had landed on, which was Brody South, was a very controversial site in town, and it should be further studied, which is what is going on right now at the behest of the Rec Commission. A group was formed of the Conservation Commission, Open Space Commission, Friends of Brody, Rec Commission, Youth Sports, which seem to be the most interested parties in what may go on at Brody South or large parcels of land in town. That group has spent a year or two reviewing probably in excess of fifteen, maybe as many as thirty sites, private and public. There are very few parcels that the town owns in an effort to find the highest and best use of a parcel of land. It has come down to, as I came before, the old board and requested funding for, there has been an environmental study done on the hundred and fifty acres of Brody South. The subcommittee thought it would be appropriate to do an environmental study on the three other parcels it seems that it sees as potentially viable parcels.
What are, what are those three other parcels?
One being the Old Steel Road property.
Which one?
The Old Steel Road.
Steel Road, yeah.
The second one being the, the field directly behind Antalini. And if you review the topos of this.
So, the, the second one is the site visit that we went?
Correct. And if you review the topos of Antalini, the seventy acres of Antalini, there is another substantially flat area if you're facing the school to the rear right-hand side of the property, up East Cotton Hill Road.
Okay.
And the commission thought it would be appropriate to study those three sites from an environmental perspective. If none of those were precluded by an environmental study, then, as I outlined before this, the prior Board of Selectmen, the committee had hoped to undertake a cost anal, an engineering cost analysis of the four sites. But we don't want to do that if the environmentals, which are, are very inexpensive. If the environmentals preclude any of those sites, why spend money with a cost engineering study? The Board of Selectmen has graciously agreed to fund that as soon, if there are, if there are funds left from the roofing project. So, the Brody South Subcommittee is waiting to see if the funds, if there are any funds left to fund the study. If not, I assume it will be part of next year's budget at the agreement of the Board of Selectmen. At that point in time, the Brody South Subcommittee would make its recommendation to the Recreation Commission, who would then pass along the recommendation to the Board of Selectmen. And certainly you guys can take a lot of that away by making the decisions now. What we have discovered is the, the Antalini site that has been referred to tonight, which I was part of, the, John Mashie and I got together with Earl and Carl to look at three sites back in oh eight, Antalini being one of them, targeting for the night engineering. That field that is laid out is, in fact, the proper size for a football field, because at that time, we were only considering a football field. We're now subsequent to that, and for the studies, as Dan has pointed out, there is a substantial need for recreation space in this town, not only girls softball, and a field that hopefully is large enough to accommodate both football and soccer overlaid, not the two fields independent. That would be about four or five acres. But if you were to overlay the two, which is what Dan measured out up at Antalini, long enough for a football field, because that's longer than soccer, and wide enough for soccer, because that's wider than football. And that's, that's what we've been studying, but there's certainly a need, as Dan pointed out, for girls softball. Brown's Corner, as it's currently laid out, doesn't accommodate any adult sports, softball, or other outdoor group activity, flag football, or, or other, beyond the age of eighteen, organized sports. So, hopefully, the Rec Commission is, is looking at that whole picture and will pass along the recommendation. Along those lines, Antalini, as, as Dan pointed out, the field space may or may not be significant to, to, in cost-wise, to improve on, and that's why the Subcommittee had thought the engineering cost studies would be useful. One of the drawbacks to Antalini will be parking, as Dan has repeatedly stated. If you're looking to use Antalini as competition field, you are looking at a hundred and sixty or more parking spots, as Dan has indicated. Brown's Corner, at a hundred and, I believe Brown's Corner is currently a hundred and seventy, isn't large enough. The current parking, including the asphalt area that is technically a play area, but they use for parking during events, my best estimate is about a hundred tops. And the facility is used on weekends, so the, the committee thinks without these studies, that's why we feel the studies are important. The committee feels that you're probably going to need parking for a hundred and eighty to two hundred up there, because you need the hundred and sixty for the sports, and you'll need twenty or thirty for the activities that normally go on on a Sunday or a Saturday up at the school.
And just to interrupt you for a minute, and your, your, your guesstimate is that there's combined parking at the, at the Antalini school that we visited today, there's a hundred?
It's about a hundred, yes. So, if that field is to be the competitive field, you're not looking, that would be an additional expense that might be significant. The Rec Commission has heard that there are considerations for additional practice fields. The Recreation Commission at this time and in the foreseeable future does not see any need for practice fields. We need to much better utilize the fields that we do have, but we do not need to spend any significant money to increase practice field space. Currently, New Hartford Elementary is dramatically underused. This year, we made an effort to have football moved down there in early September. The superintendent was agreeable, was based on the principal being agreeable, and he was agreeable, but football was not agreeable. But there were only two soccer teams at New Hartford Elementary this year, and they both used it on a Tuesday. I, for ten years, I organized all of the practice schedules and game schedules for soccer. I'm, New Hartford Elementary, I know it is pine-mellowed, many of you do, is always dramatically underused. So, soccer, our feeling is soccer should probably move off of there, and it may be better. It's flatter, there's parking. There's a ton of, there are a lot of good reasons to support football using that as, as a location.
But now that's a permanent location.
As a practice field.
Right.
Football practices sometime, starts practice sometime in early August, practices every night of the week until late August. And then when their season begins, they practice three nights a week until the end of the season.
You know, what I would, what I would say is, is, if I can, Dan, is that, you know, maybe it's possible, you know, again, I'm not an engineer, I just walked the site as, you know, as, as you guys, for, for the first time, looking at, looking at it, you know, as improving it, and, and, but maybe, maybe there's room within the acreage to, to add these additional, you know, fifty or eighty parking spaces.
I think it would be great.
Cut some of that dirt out, use it in the, in another area.
Jack, that's exactly what I'm saying.
Possibly a saving, you know, you don't have to buy the dirt, it's already there, but.
You need, we need an engineering study to find out what the costs would be to improve that parcel.
No, and I, I would say too that, I mean, I've been to a, you know, some, some events at Antalini years ago, with my, my children attended school there, and after that, I've been to a couple of events. And it doesn't seem like there's enough parking there as it is. A lot of people park down the road, you know, in the circular areas, jammed up.
Been there for breakfast with Santa?
Yeah, that's right, yeah, that's, you know, so. It doesn't seem like there's enough.
Breakfast.
That's right, no, that's quadruple of what, you know.
Football can't, football doesn't compete with Santa, I'll just tell you that right now.
Not even close.
So, okay.
So, that's largely where, where the, the Rec Commission and the, the study group stand. And certainly, if the Board of Selectmen want to take over all that work, that would be great.
Sorry, before you speak, I just want to say, have a couple of things back for Dan. Dan, you did say that you're thinking that the Board of Selectmen is precluding these whole decisions, but isn't that what you, you kind of requested of us? You sent all of us a letter asking us to look at these two, three fields.
No.
So, we're not trying to preclude you. We're trying to move this forward and come to a decision.
That is not.
And that's why we're all here.
That is not the request that's on the table. The request that's on the table is for funding, and I understand you.
No, the letter that you sent, the letter that you sent the three of us individually. Did you want us to address it, or did you want us to ignore it? We're addressing it, we're not trying to preclude you. We are moving forward based on some information that you provided to all of us outside of this office. You've mailed it to our, our homes. And that's fine. We're addressing this, and we're going to move, and we're trying to move forward and come up to a solution for everyone. We're not trying to preclude anyone.
Okay.
That's why we're here. And second of all, the one, another thing that you noted, I, I'm not sure if you, if you want us to consider New Hartford Elementary for football? Am I getting that from you?
Not affirmative, not affirmative.
Because you didn't, you, you had a statement saying we don't need any more practice fields.
Correct.
But if we need more competition fields, then we should consider some additional uses, not just, not just temporarily take football. Wait, 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 let me finish my statement.
I have an answer for you.
Not just temporarily take football out of Brody Park South and put them in New Hartford Elementary temporarily, but let's find a solution to permanently house, house this.
Right. And New Hartford Elementary, according to Carl, when he was planning on zoning officer, cannot be used as an extensive competitive field. It's too close to the river. But to use it as a practice facility was fine. So, that's why New Hartford Elementary is not considered as a potential, it was considered as a potential
Formal.
Competition field. Formal field. But in, in our research, and, and we do discuss things with Rista now, and we had discussed things extensively with Carl in the past, the, the letter is, is simply, because the, the prior Board of Selectmen left me with a feeling that they were very uncomfortable funding anything to do with Old Steel Road. The letter is, was to not preclude, hopefully, not preclude Steel Road from the possibilities. Let the studies preclude it. It wasn't to act on any of the parcels, because we don't have the studies done. But I was left with the feeling that we're the Board, we're the prior Board to approve the funding for the environmental and the engineering cost overview. Steel Road would not be considered at all. It would be precluded right up front. And at that time, and if this board chooses not to fund those studies, then so be it. But that's all it's asking for, is the studies, not to go ahead with anything else, because the studies may preclude it.
Yeah, but let me just say something.
Okay.
I've gotten a few emails about the studies, you know, so, and, you know, I'm not saying that we shouldn't study, you know, whatever, whatever, you know, we need to. I don't know if we should study a site that we don't have a right to purchase. You know, we, so that's one, that's just my feeling. You know, that might, you know, it might be good money after bad if, if, if for some reason we did a study, and then, you know, you know, something happened to one of the father brothers, and they changed their mind, and they decided not to sell it to us at all. Even though they said they would sell it to us now, you know, my thought would be, if, we're going to spend a lot of money on studying something, let's make sure we have, if, if the study's in our favor, let's make sure we have the right to purchase it before we study it.
The first study's five hundred and fifty dollars.
The second thing, I mean, we want to study. We're, we're going to study these places, Dan. I mean, that, you know, I mean, you know, I, we're not, we're not going to put a football field somewhere without doing an environmental study.
But then don't spend, if the Board of Selectmen is not.
And I, and I understand your point.
Then don't spend any money on studies.
Your, your, your point is, is well taken, that, you know, you need to have an environmental study before you go forward with, 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 with other issues. But you also need to have someone on board, you know, other people on board, whether it's the neighbors, you know, or, you know.
The board of finance?
So, I mean, so, I think, you know, in, in a way, I did, you know, this, the funding for the studying was not really, you know, what we went up there to talk about today, you know, so. I think it, I think it's, it's two issues. I think you have, you know, you made some good points. I've looked at some of these emails that have come across my, my computer.
I haven't gotten those emails.
I've seen a couple of them. I just think that, you know, for now, I think, you know, I'm interested in what other people think about Antalini. Because whatever site we, we ultimately approve, we're going to study it, right? I mean, don't you agree? And I understand it's, you know, I, I, I understand from reading the emails that there's, you know, it's a contentious issue about the funding for the proposed sites. That's, that's what I get. So, you know, go ahead, Derek.
Well, as, as a person who was on Town on Recreation for a long time, I was on it in the eighties when Brody Park was purchased. We've known since then, we need more fields. That, back then, we identified that. I think a couple of things. I mean, you brought up Brody Park South. I think one of my problems with that is there was an idea when we bought it, it was my understanding, that we were preserving that for the future, and a lot of adults use that. I think one of the good things about Antalini, and, and I disagree with you about this walk. I think for our Board of Selectmen to get out there in the field, actually look at it, and rather than just saying we're going to study it, start making a judgment. We've walked it, we've seen it, this is our best opinion, because let's face it, we're about to do budget time, we're fighting for every dollar. I mean, I work in the elections office. Every little dollar is right now, the economy's really bad. One of the things that I see that makes Antalini attractive is like adding the parking, you're helping the school. Fixing the fields, improving the fields, you're helping the school. And when you're trying to sell something, and I'm not anti-football, but when you're saying we do four games a year competitively, for how many people? That is something that a lot of people are going to go, wait a minute, my taxes are going up, this, that, and the other thing. And you got four games a year?
Exactly.
But when you can sell it and say, hey, we're using it four games a year competitively, and we don't want to say us against them, but then we can do girls softball, we can do soccer, the kids can use it, this and that, it suddenly becomes.
Maybe a foot trail around the seventy acres.
Right, it becomes more attractive. Maybe we even put in something so adults can go up at particular times and have a track. I don't know, I'm not an expert on, on how you do this stuff, but it suddenly becomes more attractive, more palatable. And I do think it's part of the responsibility of the Board of Selectmen to start making the difficult decisions about where we spend money to start the process going. Because we don't have a budget where we can say, every piece of land that we own, we're going to study. You know, I, I got, frankly, I got other things in my office that I'm going to be hitting them up for, and if they're all on the study, you know, I can't, I can't operate. So, I, I think it's a good thing to move forward with. I'd like to see if it's going to be up in Antalini, that we have some type of discussion with the schools about what's, how can we maybe shift it a little bit so the schools get maximum use? how can we maybe shift it a little bit so the schools get maximum use out of it? You know, and maybe we'll stop, maybe at some point we look at the Steel Road property for some type of a field that doesn't require as much parking, that, that's, somebody's using it, maybe it's, it's more of an adult thing or something. I don't know, but we can't do everything at once.
Anybody else? About Antalini first.
Oh, about Antalini.
About Antalini?
Yeah, sure, I'll be going to, um.
I mean, Dan, are you done? You want more about it?
No, that's.
Yes, yes.
Go ahead, Maria.
From, from all the positives we've heard about how great it will be for the schoolchildren, it just seems like a no-brainer that Antalini would be the place to really look at for expansion of the fields. However, I think if this Brody Park South Committee has laid out a certain course for themselves, and it's not an expensive course, if, if another study is five hundred on top of the Antalini as well, I would respect what their process and say, "Okay, guys, you wanna study two more, go right ahead." Even though from, from how it looks now, Antalini really does seem to be the place. So just wanted to, to add that.
Let me say, Dan, so, so, again, I, I mean, I'll probably be redundant, but we've got four locations. We've got Brody Park South, we've got Antalini A, Antalini B, and Old Steel Road.
Right.
Now, we've, we've already studied Brody Park South, correct?
The environmental study's done.
Studies, okay. So is there, is there, and there's proposed to be two, just two more, not, 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 not Antalini B, just.
No, three.
A and, and Old Steel Road.
The proposal that I brought to the Board of Selectmen, I believe, was eighteen hundred and eighty dollars for the three sites.
Okay, for the three sites. Well, one's already done.
No, no.
For the two.
For the two Antalini and Old Steel Road.
And, and the Old Steel Road property, the three sites. I believe the estimate was, was eighteen eighty for the three sites.
Okay.
Um, I know that the, 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 um, Old Steel Road property breakout, and you brought it out at the meeting, um, was five fifty because there was some kind of crazy five hundred dollar cutoff, and your comment was, "Jeez, come up with fifty bucks and you can go do it." But, I, I'm not, this is just a presentation, folks. If you decide upfront that you're not interested in Old Steel Road, then that saves that study and it saves any future studies. Um, if you decide you're not interested in Antalini too, we won't, you know, the subcommittee would not pursue that. I mean, uh, certainly the ultimate decision is with this board, and if, at this time, this board makes those decisions, then it minimizes, um, the remainder of the effort for Brody South Subcommittee, cause we still wanna come up with a recommendation for Brody South. And then it minimizes the, the efforts of, of the Rec Commission, which is fine. I mean, ultimately, it goes, whatever the recommendations are, go through the Board of Selectmen. If you make decisions at any point in this, on this road, that minimizes the efforts of the other committees, so be it.
Could I ask for a clarification? Brody, I mean, Antalini A and Antalini B, are they close to each other? Are they?
What, Dan was absolutely right. The property behind the school is not, the usable, the feasible, usable property behind the school is not very much larger than what you currently see. It becomes bill-o country very quickly as it goes up East Cotton Hill Road. When you look at the topos, bordering East Cotton Hill Road, there's a couple of private landowners, and then there is what appears to be on the topo, probably ten acres of relatively flat land buried in the woods.
But access would be from, from.
Access would be more expensive.
From East Cotton Hill.
Right, but once you got in there, it appears, and that's why, you know, that's why the committee thought it would make sense to look at it. It appears as though once you get in there, it wouldn't cost much to develop it.
Well, wouldn't it make more sense if we were gonna spend dollars doing a study to start with the dollars on property we already own?
We do own that.
Well, we own, we own Antalini.
It's part of the seventy acres.
But I, I think what, what is, what should be said is that we already, most of the field's already fairly flat. Why would we add another field at that higher topography without first considering this field? If we knew, if we need something in the future, then I would look at that secondarily. I wouldn't go ahead and study that second, higher field, um, now for what we need now.
You're not proposing that, though, right?
No, well, well, I, I see it as a package. The second field overall may be less expensive than the primary field behind the school because of the topography and access. And it may not be, but we don't know that without some kind of engineering.
But as far as the studies go, Dan, there's, there's, you want three, we've done one, and the priority for to do the next two was Antalini A and Old Steel, right? That was the reasonable goal.
No, he still wants to do two studies at Antalini.
Oh, okay.
The committee is suggesting.
Suggesting, yeah. All right, well, I think, I have enough information about the studies, and if anybody else has any more information that they wanna ask about. I just.
Do you guys have any information about the studies that you wanna ask?
What was, when we were looking for a place to put up a new, uh, firehouse, or no, a town garage, I guess it was. Wasn't it going to be very expensive to use that piece up and back of the school because they were gonna have to blast something like twenty feet of ledge out? They weren't, they weren't talking about filling, they were talking about removing.
Up in the higher location or directly behind the school?
I think it was right, and directly in back of the school.
Yeah, well, there is that, there is a nice big hill right there, right behind the school. If they were gonna push that back, I can see that.
Well, I don't, I'm not sure, but do you, you, you were in on it?
Hold on a second.
I think.
I'm younger than you think. I have not been involved in building any firehouses.
It wasn't a firehouse, it was the, the town garage.
He wasn't on that committee yet.
No, I wasn't on that.
It was Mike Disney and, and, yeah.
I, I think.
But that was, that's why they didn't want it, was because it was going to cost so much.
And I think that was the draw.
The land.
In your engineering report, because when I walked Antalini the other day, the, the first one, this two thousand eight report was done, I don't know why they didn't put it in the report. All I'm saying is that verbally, the engineer that walked that said, "See this hill here? This is all ledge, it needs to be blasted out of here." They didn't put it in the report, it'll probably come up this time, but that, you're right, Dan, that's what they're talking about, and that's.
And that is it, Site A or Site B?
That was the land between the existing play area and the road.
Okay.
That little knoll that we walked over, that had some rocks sticking out of it.
Yeah, but I mean, this day and age, they gotta be, that's not a lot of blasting as far as.
I don't know, that's why you're doing the report.
I, you know.
That's why you're.
It's not that big a knoll.
That wouldn't have to be done, it might have to be done to put a town garage, but it wouldn't have to be done to.
Yeah, I was gonna say, for the field, we just add on top of it, wouldn't we?
Well, you're not talking about having to excavate, excavate to a level of a foundation.
Yeah.
Okay, that's, that's the difference.
Yeah.
If, if I might, to, to reel this in. We are dealing with an issue where we've had a constituency of people come to our meetings once or twice to relay concerns. We've got a group that's studying South Brody that is perhaps going above and beyond the task of the South Brody Charge to develop plans for South Brody. They're going beyond, beyond to start talking about negotiating. We've given no authority to negotiate to buy land. I don't sense any support in the community to start buying land, okay? The money around here is so tight, we're getting ready to start talking about budget process. And the fact of the matter is that there's just no go in the grant list. And when there's no go and no building and no construction, that means no new money. And I mean, everybody knows, when you come in here, we talk to the building department, there's no construction, there's no addition. So what you have is cost of living and COLA for all the, the existing programs in the schools, and we try to squeeze tighter to make things work because there's no new money. Okay, and I think Beth is probably gonna come out and say the grant list went up one percent, and we're still waiting to find out what happened with the cars, because when the cars, you know, the gas goes up and everyone starts saying, "Well, I can't drive the big rig anymore, I gotta get a less expensive car." Guess what? That pulls back on our grant list and we don't have the money. I, I don't sense a significant amount of support in the community. I don't sense on a caucus with a number of members in Board of Finance, any support for an allocation to buy land at this point in time for sports fields. And I think that, that's qualified, knowing that we have this, this field up here that is a possibility. Now, knowing that the timeframe that has been indicated by our engineers that says, "Look, this is, if we start now, it's more than a year, unless we expedite it by sodding it or turfing it." If we choose not to get involved in intervening and expedite this process with some guidance and some decision-making, then all the folks that have expressed concerns to us are just hearing, again, like I said, lip service. You know, our job, as I look at it, first selectman, selectman, whatever you wanna say, is we are here to provide solutions to problems. Okay? I see this, Antalini, I believe, is the sound decision, and I don't think there's really enough magic to pull off Old Steel Road that it will ever happen. And therefore, when you sit there and you say, "It's only five hundred bucks." To me, my job is to save the five hundred bucks, okay? And, and put it somewhere where the taxpayers can use it. I think the guidance is, we hit the go button and we say, "Let's get the study." And I know there's been some talk, and they've probably already gotten the wheels turning. But get the guidance and get the, the wheels turning here so that we get better information at this board level about what we can do, and as we move on and we start talking about, you know, number four on the agenda, capital, are we gonna back up our actions with some level of funding to try to make this happen so that the people know? Because it's gonna take more than a year, possibly two, to make this happen, that, again, we're just not telling them what they wanna hear, that we're actually having a good faith discussion, and it's just not about football. Yeah, there are the drivers that have, have shown us that, the need, and maybe, you know, amplified it, but it's about spring soccer, it's, it's maybe we convert that baseball field up there to softball, and, and we provide more than one constituency, and Dari brings up a good point, hey, maybe you work in a walking track out there. Maybe, maybe you get, you know, twenty, and I think one of the big things out here is that we really need to quantify. I don't know whether a hundred parking spots is, is right or wrong, but I know that when I go see Santa, there's not enough parking. And, and I know a lot of firefighters, you know, Alicia's husband, Morgan, and a lot of people that have concerns when we go to holiday events at Antalini, that we can't get our big rigs in there because.
It's tight.
You know, Santa is a rock star in New Hartford. I mean, he's in there packing the joints, seven hundred breakfasts. I still can't believe it. They've probably got it down in Caribbean, Caribbean. Account the women's club's got more money than they know what to do. So, uh, I, I would say that I think the guidance is that we need to show our leadership and move this along and, and get ready to segue into line item four, where we get into the brass tacks of, of how tight the money is, but to see if we can start putting a little money behind it to say, "This could be a two-year project." I, I'm fully confident that Brown's Corner is going to be done, wrapped up with a rededication this spring. I think the community loves the work that we've done there. I think we show, we've shown people what we can do. You know, we've guided that project back, and, and people are really, really happy. And, and I think this is a new opportunity for us to show them that we can do more. But I think we gotta go through the process and outline a, a procedure for us, which involves bringing the Board of Education back in, then working with the Rec Commission, and I, I think the Brody's South Task Force, as, as much as I appreciate what they're trying to do, really needs to wrap up their task of, of defining what they see the vision is for South Brody. And, and, you know, we'll work with the Rec Commission and the other agencies and get all the groups together, get the engineers to get, you know, find out what the, the natural resources inventory says. And I think we really need to be careful on how we outline the scope of work and how it addresses specifically what we're looking to do here. We're looking to go, you know, from what was, what, two hundred and seventy feet to three, to four twenty depth, and, and have them comment specifically on proposal. You know, this is one of the problems that I saw with, you know, the, the report that was provided for South Brody is that it never really commented on the uniqueness of the parcel to the greater surroundings or what the impact of the specific type of development we're talking about has on the property itself. You know, we need to know if there's anything so unique there that we're harming anything. And, you know, when they do these natural resources inventory, is there anything unique to the greater area? You know, the bottom line is that if you say, "Yeah, there's pine trees there, and there's this, and it's beautiful." Well, I mean, we all know, we could drive right into Hartford, these, the whole town is beautiful, you know, I mean. The, the natural resource inventory needs to do a little bit more than just address the, the inventory of trees and converts, because we all know, everybody at town's got a bear in their backyard, coyotes.
All the studies are gonna be, you know.
But you need to.
Tens of thousands of dollars that will be studied, you know, whatever site we do, the engineering fees will be tens of tens.
I don't know that it'll be that much. I don't know, but it will be.
How about these guys? I'm assuming that you didn't want the, the football field at the end of you.
Let, let me just say, by the way, let me just say first of all that I, my kids are actively involved in sports, as Dan knows. My son's played football, still plays basketball, still plays baseball, still plays soccer. My daughter plays basketball, softball, um, so I'm all for a place for the kids to play. I haven't really followed this too close, obviously, for obvious reasons. It's the property on Old Steel Road, it butts my house, so for obvious reasons, I do not want that. But if I thought it was the proper place, I could be open-minded enough to realize that that would be the proper place. And I know that in the conversations I've had with the football people, uh, everybody's kinda letting them be the scapegoat, and they're saying they don't wanna be the scapegoat. But, Dan, correct me if I'm wrong, it just seems like that's what.
You're trying to accomplish.
No, I don't, I don't, I don't know, just you correct me.
Right.
The, the problem, what I'm saying, like, like.
They are the can't.
Scary.
They are simply the straw that broke the camel's back. As Dan said, we need softball field for, for the girls. We need recreation space for adults. We, we can't put our softball field in down there. It's not football. And so what we're trying to do is solve all of the problems.
But that's my point. The conversations I've had with people, they don't wanna go down this road in five years from now. They wanna be able, if you're gonna spend money on property that you don't own, you need to buy a parcel that addresses all those issues at once.
Right.
And gives you a possible, they're talking about, well, if you wanna bring lacrosse in, or girls softball.
Right.
Old Steel Road, to me, does not do that. With that being said also, as, as she said, for four, um, football games a year that, that happen.
That's why we wanna get away from that.
Right, right. But, but, but my point is, is right now, Brown's Corner is, is big enough to, I mean, yeah, there's scheduling conflicts. I know I'm involved, I'm president of basketball right now, I've been involved in, in the baseball. There's scheduling nightmares, as I heard you said, you've scheduled it for, for, for ten years. I run basketball right now. We have to actually go to Regional Seven on Sundays for our rec basketball program and rec Regional Seven. So my point is, on a day when football is down there and has to use Brown's Corner, then travel soccer says, "Well, we need another field because we don't have a place to play."
They better go to Norfolk.
So why couldn't they look into like we do? I mean, I don't even know if this is feasible, but why couldn't they go to Regional Seven and say for four times a year, "We need to rent your soccer fields for four days."
We go to Norfolk and American Legion Baseball goes to Torrington. Both, Torrington, Norfolk is not, Norfolk is a viable outlet. American Legion Baseball is going to Torrington, Torrington keeps setting limits and saying, "Okay, this is the last year, guys. We've got enough field space problems as it is, but we'll let you use the field this year." So, it's, it's not even football and lacrosse and all those things. It's the explosion, and you're involved in it, of how often kids now play sports. Five years ago, we did not have football, we did not have fall baseball. So it's not even a population growth issue, it's the fact that we now have three very active sports in the fall.
Right.
We used to only have one. It was great, you know, baseball in the spring, soccer in the fall.
But my point is, but the power problem is, it's still only a problem four weekends out of the year. And like she said, you're going to ask the taxpayers to buy a park that we don't already own for basically four weekends a year right now. And if that would solve all the sports problems years down the road, that would be fine, but I don't believe. First of all, I don't know, was there, you measured off and said that it was six hundred and twenty by three hundred and fifty feet on Old Steel Road. Now, and, and you made comment that you needed two hundred cars. It seems to me when you put two hundred cars in there, it doesn't leave you any room for a football, for a football field.
Right, again, that's.
Is it okay if we take Old Steel Road off the table as a possible size? Is that all right with you?
Jack, Jack, I mean, this is our, this is our meeting, right? They don't, they don't have a say-so of what comes off the table or not.
That's true, that's true.
This is our meeting, all right? So, Mr. St. Pierre, did you have anything else?
No, I just, um, the infrastructure work, does any estimates on the cost of infrastructure?
Infrastructure, yeah.
Infra, infrastructure, thank you, Chris. To put the field in, I'd say about. To put the field in, on Silver Road.
I have not.
Exactly.
We've never gone.
It would be outrageous. Can you get that through the town? Second of all, these fields don't get green on their own. Irrigation, I've had, nobody bring up irrigation. That's a sand pit. Do you realize how much work it's gonna take to get grass to grow in that sand pit? Irrigation, that has not been brought to the table.
Well, I think that's, that's in, in a world that we're discussing, that's an apple to apples. There was comments made earlier about the quality and condition of the fields at Antalini. And I think it's part that we recognize is that the folks that down, that do Brown's Corner do such a nice job because there is irrigation there.
It's all silent secret why the grass is so green everywhere.
It's, it's beautiful, but there's been sizable infrastructure done there.
Right, and it's, that's all paid for, baseball paid for themself, soccer paid for themselves, the town does not pay for that. All the town does is cut the grass.
I guess my.
This is a large expense.
I guess my point is.
And then football with only four very limited resources is gonna pay for the upkeep of that field?
Well, I don't think that we're saying that it's, it's uniquely anybody's. And I think that's the thing is that.
No, my, my point is, like I was saying, if you, the reason why Antalini is, is to me attractive is because you already own it, first of all. And it gets you by the problem for a while. Not saying it's gonna be, go away. But if you are in fact gonna purchase a piece of property that you obviously do not own, it has to be big enough so you're not going down this road again five years from now. And you have to make it a big enough facility for, if this problem isn't coming back in four or five years.
It's not big enough.
It's not big enough. And like he said, that sightline, you don't have, Stedman Road is, is, is broken right now, so you can't. The only way you have to go from Stedman Road onto two oh two, the DOT, the sightline out of there, they're not gonna want two hundred cars going out onto two oh two on a Sunday afternoon, I can tell you that right now, without changing that sightline, and that's gonna be.
Be a hard time, yeah, now that it won't be, won't be left.
Today, exactly, exactly.
Like, and it's, it's good when it's dark out so you can see the lights.
Yeah, they come up off the gas though.
During the day, when you can't see lights, you better have your foot to the floor when you're coming out of that road.
And one, one final comment, I mean, I've, I've been involved in town things for over thirty years. I mean, if we have an opportunity where we have a Board of Selectmen that's actually willing to move a project forward, I don't care where it comes from, because until we start the process, we're dead in the water. And we've been dead in the water for thirty years. I think it's refreshing that we have a Board of Selectmen who say, hey, we're gonna spend some money to start the process and get it going. It needed to be spent thirty years ago. My thing would be to encourage you, I'd love to see you do A and B, but if all you wanna do is A, hey, at least you started the process.
Thank you, Darian.
What about Dan?
No, it, it's the conditions of the roads.
Yes, I agree.
The, the width of the roads, even to improve them, I think you'll find some places our roads are fifteen feet wide. Where you were looking, entering the piece up there, it's thirty-five feet, which is a good width for a town road. Coming into it, it is not thirty-five feet. And you would have to, it's gonna be tight to straighten out fifteen feet of road so cars can pass and whatever, everything else.
It'd be outrageous.
I think it would be beautiful.
Yeah, I think, what I think would cost you more money, that sightline.
If the parking was there. But you don't have the parking. And there's a lot of things that would have to be found out about Old Steel Road that are not, I don't know, people didn't ask the questions or just don't know the answers or what. But the water situation there, there is not two entrances to that piece of property unless these two people right here would give you the go-ahead to cross their property. Because the road, the, the other road that goes into that area was a right-of-way. And, and both of these guys own right to Lamont's fence line.
So technically, the right-of-way is to that property to, to go to the sawmill. So, and I don't know what that right-of-way actually is, is that twenty-five feet, thirty feet, I don't know.
We, we haven't really done that type of research.
I own part of it, he owns part of it.
I think we've just.
So I'm talking about, there's still the right-of-way to get to the sawmill.
Oh, yeah.
So then you have setbacks on top of that, so.
Yeah.
To me, now you're taking away from that six hundred and twenty feet.
Well, it's clear, and, and that's the thing that, you folks didn't do a walk with us, is that we acknowledged that when, when we measured, we, we took into consideration the size of the parking at Brown's Corner, which is.
Two-thirds of the size of the wall.
It would have taken half that field.
And what you're basically saying is, I think what Dan was saying, that, would you say that, that Brown's Corner was roughly a hundred and seventy?
It's a hundred and seventy, yeah.
So you're saying it's not even big enough for what Brown's has now, and he's saying you need more than Brown's. So if you were to put a parking lot the size of Brown's Corner now, there's not enough room for a field. And he's saying you need more than Brown's Corner has now, which I agree. So now let's see, take it forward.
They do a parking on the streets in that area like they do, they're crossing the street in the empty C lot on a, on a Sunday.
Okay.
And they're also parking on your beautiful seeded parks with your little trees parked around there too. A lot of parking on it, which irritated me to say the least.
I'm working on that, Dan.
Thank you.
Hopefully we can develop some overflow. I think that everybody acknowledges that this is, this is not a, a fault thing. To see a program develop and kids get interested in the sport and have it grow so quickly is a great thing.
Wait, we're adding, we're gonna do basketball courts too?
You know, and I, you, you sat there and you talked about, and I was waiting for it, because that's the other acknowledgement, is that gym space comes premium in this town. We're actually paying ten thousand dollars a year for court rentals and, and.
Well, we're not, the basketball, the town's not.
No, that's what I'm saying, but we, our, but, when I say we're, I'm talking about our families. And, and, and I'm not making a general government or a town or a sports league thing, it's, it's our families, it's the same folks. The, the parents of the kids that are doing it, you know, they're driving, there's some coaches that are going, just like Dan just said, are taking their kids to Harlington, to that new court facility and renting space and, you know, and here we have, you know, we've moved the fieldhouse, you know, conditioned that up a little bit so that there's the, the opportunity to have a basketball court in there in the future. At least we preserve that structure so we know that it's there, but, you know, I, I think the, the sound move is to, to push this field expansion forward while the timing is right. The, the timing is right because if we choose to sit on this for another month, then the budget process is done. You know, we, we know basically what the parameters of the town were, we're getting ready to have a capital discussion, and I've got some preliminary numbers to talk about, but if we choose not to intervene and give the guidance that we need to give now, then a year is lost. And I, I know that the families that participate in football at South Brody don't enjoy being the subject of controversy. They're just looking for a place to play with their kids, okay? It's not about Brody Park South, it's not about where the field is, it's about having a healthy lifestyle, getting outside, enjoying some time with your family and your friends, and doing an organized activity that's just good for you. Whether it's Dan doing soccer, or you doing basketball, or me doing baseball, you know, freely admit I'm not the best coach. Still sub-five hundred on my basketball team, but we're coming back. But I think that if we have this type of thing, I think that the thing that stands to me is that there, I believe, Antalini is the only spot in New Hartford that is absent of controversy. I think everybody in the community could say, somebody used the term no-brainer, I think it might have been Maria. And I, I've sent several emails out to me, it's a no-brainer. Everybody understands it, everybody can get behind it. There's the synergy of uses for the kids in school, there's the opportunity for spring soccer up there, where we can put some soccer games up there. And we could transform that field, which is for little kids, into a softball field. They probably wouldn't even know the difference in the dimensions, and our girls can go up there and play. And you can, you can solve a lot of different problems by putting a little bit of seed money. And I know that the tendency from, from the day that I moved into this town is that the youth sports families have paid the freight with Brown's Corner. And they did everything there, they took it from one field property in the seventies to what it is today, and it's beautiful. And I think it's the envy of a lot of towns that surround us. But, you know, sometimes you gotta intervene and you gotta, you gotta put the, the financial backing of the town behind it to move things forward, to solve problems for our constituents. And right now, if we have a problem that's out there, it is the debate over the size of football and the impact on South Brody. And I'm not saying that South Brody is not an acceptable location in my mind for practice fields because I think it's been used for soccer for years, it used to be a golf course, and to me, those fields are fine. But I think that at some level, with the lack of sufficient, you know, at this point, they just keep growing, it's not gonna get any easier. You know, if we don't get involved now, what if they, what if they come back and we hear they got a hundred and seventy-five kids this year? You know, this, this summer coming in, what if it's two hundred? The problem just gets worse, we're gonna have more people come to our meeting because we missed the opportunity to act and show leadership on this issue to solve a problem for our constituents. So I say we move it along, we, we put some money behind the study and see what the impact is right in the here and now. And I know that there's probably already been some good legwork done by Northwest, specifics of this field expansion. But I think the other things are, are further out. I think we could, we could start working to show that it's more than just lip service, like I said, that we're getting behind something to try to solve a problem for our constituents and we move this. So if anybody wants to make a motion to that effect, I'm, I'm glad to, to hear it and we can move on because we got, we got some agenda. You wanna stay here all night?
I was gonna say the same thing, I wanna stay all night.
Yeah, yeah, I'll, I'll make a motion to authorize an expenditure for the environmental study for the Antalini field that we, expansion that we toured this evening at, at four thirty.
Okay.
A second.
Okay. Any further debate? I think, I think the obvious thing is that we could wait to see what the results are, and if we need to do another, we'd go from there. But we could also talk about one again. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Sounds good. I appreciate everybody's input, and I appreciate the people that actually came out and went with us.